So we will open the City of Sagatuck's Planning Commission meeting for January 21st. We have a roll call.
Mans?
Here.
Ben Meter?
Here.
Peters, Peterson, Chris will not be here tonight. She had a duck in the family. If anybody didn't hear that. Crawford?
Here.
Vlacity?
Here.
Fox?
You.
And Casper?
Here.
We, we have a quorum.
Okay. Uh, we need to approve our agenda for tonight. Do we need to make any changes or can we approve it as it is?
We have a change. We want to add under item six, letter C, your annual report to city council.
Okay. We will make that change. Anything else before we vote to approve?
Let's, yeah, I have nothing else to change.
Okay, all right, well, uh, let's take a vote to approve the agenda.
Was that a motion?
Oh, sorry, do we have a motions?
I, I make a motion to approve the planning commission gen- agenda as amended uh, by adding the annual reports to city council under six C uh, for January 21st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a a motion to approve and a motion, a support for that. So I'll go ahead and call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Ben Meter?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
And Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, next on the agenda, we will have the approval of minutes. Are there any changes noted to the minutes or can we approve them as they are?
Yeah, I just have uh, some minor edits. Um, but anywhere where it says Casper, it, my spelling is A R and not E R.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, just throw that out there. And then um, under uh, item three, I think that should be uh, in the last sentence, call vote, uh, the motion passed. Or it was an emotional. There's it.
Yeah, I kind of like the emotion.
The emotion was kind of fun.
Yeah.
Good eye. Okay, so uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those amendments?
That was Dan and Richard Crawford. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Ben Meter?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
And Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the public on agenda items only. So uh, we will ask you to identify yourself and give us your name and address and uh, limit your comments to three minutes on agenda items only. Anyone? I don't see any Cindy, do you? Any hands?
I don't, I don't see any. Um, Erin, do you see anybody with their hand raised?
You're not.
Okay. All right, well, we'll um, close in the public comment portion on the agenda and we will move on to old business. Uh, old business is to elect a vice chair. We haven't had one in a while. And so we need to take care of that. So uh, we are looking for nominations for someone who would like to fill the role of vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
Um, I'm willing to run. Excellent. Marcia.
Marcia, Marcia, you beat me to it. I was just going to nominate you.
Oh.
Great minds think.
He only, he only had to wait for another second.
Throw in my cap.
Okay, so we have a mo- uh, we have a nomination of Marcia Casper. We need to second that, I'm guessing Cindy?
Yes, please.
I'll second it.
Right? Do we do these uh, one at a time Cindy?
We only have the vice chair that we're electing. We already have a chair.
Yeah, I mean uh, for any more than one nomination, if that were to happen, do you vote on?
If the, if anybody else volunteers, we could have a we could do them one at a time, but I'm not seeing anybody.
So I think we can take a vote, correct? We have a, a motion to nominate in a second.
Yep, we can have, I'll call the roll. Uh, Casper?
Yes.
Cro- Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
Ben Meter?
Yes.
Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries, we have a vice chair.
Yay.
You're also generous.
Excellent choice, by the way.
Yes.
Excellent choice. All right, so we're moving on to new business tonight. That, and uh, the first uh, piece of new business we have before us tonight is a 730 Water Street placing the fish shanty. Cindy, you want to give us uh, an overview or do I call the public hearing first?
I think everybody's a little bit familiar with this. It is the, the fish shanty that was removed from 720 Water Street. And it was able to be carefully preserved and it's being stored at the Harrington's place on Booster Highway. And the historic district members got involved and worked to save it and find a place for it. And they found a place at 730 Water Street where the Retro Boats is currently located. Retro Boats is a tenant there and the owner of the property is also willing to have that shanty there. It will have to go to the Historic District Commission for approval because it is in the historic district. It's one that they reluctantly approved to be removed. Partly, but based partly on the fact that it was going to be preserved. Um, its use, I'm, its use is an accessory use to retro boat rentals. So it's a permitted use, just to clear that up. And then you have my memo. Stephanie, I think, asked me, why didn't I respond to some of, with comments to a couple of standards? It's because they're not really standards, they're a statement. Thou shall not have flashing lights. I don't know how to comment on that because thou shall not have flashing lights. So um, that's my wrap up in a nutshell. And I see that John is here and he can give you a better presentation and a more thorough description of how the property will be used.
Okay, would we like him to give his presentation first before we open the hearing?
Yes, yes, before we open the hearing.
Okay, John, would you?
I know if anybody wants to go to another page in the packet.
John, would you like to uh, there you go, and share with us your project here?
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. I think Sandy, or Cindy provided a good backdrop of uh, you know, what's transpired over the last few months. So, you know, our intention is to relocate the shanty as depicted there um, on the screen um, on the property. Those of you who have been down at that part of town over the last couple of years are aware that that, you know, has been heavily flooded. Part of our intention here um, in bringing the shanty to that location is uh, removing that concrete and raising that entire portion of the concrete. Um, so that doesn't uh, continue to be a spill over into the street when we have high water. Um, while doing that, it'll give us the opportunity to raise the shanty higher than it was um, at 720 Water Street. So part of that uh, part of that uh, new concrete or that construction then um, gives us the opportunity to uh, you know, put the uh, shanty in the, you know, higher firm footing. We have been working with the Demarest family and uh, the History Center um, to, you know, understand uh, you know, how it will be used. We have an agreement with the Demarest uh, family in terms of uh, you know, what we can and cannot do uh, with the shanty. And we're working with the uh, History Center. Uh, we've committed to uh, give uh, 20% of the shanty for, specific for the History Center to uh, display uh, storyboards and other artifacts related to the history of fishing. And uh, so Cindy also mentioned that it's an accessory uh, to our existing business. So we will probably use that uh, for some, some indoor seating for special occasions. We may have some, some retail in there as well. We've agreed to support the History Center by providing them the opportunity to sell some of their uh, merchandise to support the uh, the, from a revenue standpoint, to support the center. Uh, what we're also asking for um, is a sidewalk extension. Um, those of you who have spent time down at that end of the street uh, during the busy summer season know that there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic um, in the street, strollers, wheelchairs. Um, we had 20,000 visitors there last summer, we estimate. And they all had to walk in the middle of the street or, you know, uh, in traffic around a curve to get there. Um, so because we're raising the sidewalk and replace, or excuse me, raising the concrete there, it prevents an opportunity, an obvious opportunity to uh, provide a sidewalk extension. Uh, a lot of people visit our location after going on the Star of Sagatuck. Um, after they see what's down there, uh, they get off the Star of Sagatuck and there's no sidewalk um, to get to uh, our business. We expect additional traffic with this additional um, tourist attraction here. And uh, we just really um, would like some help um, with pedestrian traffic and we're willing to um, you know, invest um, in a sidewalk extension with the city. We would bring it across the front of the property. Um, you know, to the degree that we can, to the park. Because again, a lot of people are using that park more so than in the past because there's more activity at that end of town. And again, people to get to the park are walking down the middle of the street. Um, you know, to get to the park. So um, that's the overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I, I do have a question. Um, and, and this gets to uh, I guess it's, it's use. Um, when I, I was trying to figure out which um, you know, when I was looking at um, the, the zone and, and the standards to apply and initially you know, when I'm looking at it, it seems like it falls under a cultural performing arts facility or a museum. Cause it's, it's to you know, display uh, museum exhibitions or historical information. And so I'm just wondering why it's being de- I, I guess I question that it's an accessory use building.
Uh, well, our intention is for it to not be a museum. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, museums, they require special, like IRS tax status. But it, it seems like it could fall under the cultural performing arts facility.
Yeah, I guess I can't answer to the specifics of that. I'm not sure what cultural arts we'd be performing there.
Well, that, it, it, it doesn't necess- it says a building or group of buildings used for the enrichment and education of the community and its visitors through means such as the presentation of live performances, plays, concerts, movies, non-commercial art galleries and exhibitions, artist studios, museum exhibitions, um, or other similar activities not listed here with the approval of the Planning Commission.
Keep in mind, Marcia, those are good questions, but again, only 20% of the building, so 80% of the building is going to be an accessory use for retro boats. Um, so you're, you're talking about 20% of the building that's devoted to uh, specific displays of artifacts. You know, it's no different than you walk into Wick's Bar and Grill and they've got wonderful pictures of, you know, historical pictures of of uh, you know, the history of uh, of Sagatuck. So I guess you know, my answer to your question is, is I, I would just like you to think of it that way and just understand that only 20% of the building is for use by the History Center.
Okay. So, I mean, basically it it, it is, it's an extension of Retro Boat's business.
That's correct, yep, 80% of it.
John, is it your intent to serve or sell alcohol inside that building?
Well, there will, there will be seating in there probably for special events, so there would be a chance that, that people would be served alcohol in there, yes.
Only for special events?
Um, Dan, the, the building is going to be an accessory use. Um, so whatever we're permitted to do there, um, you know, we may, we may do.
Well, I think the reason I ask is it opens, I mean, if it's basically a oh, a, a bar, I think you open up or an extension of a bar, you, you open it to questions about all the things we subject. You know, the basic.
Yeah, we're getting, you're getting to its use and that's what we would need to approve because it's
Well, so for example, we have, so the, I, let me just explain to you if it would help this way. So uh, that use the area was used there as, you know, as a spill over area for, for customers to wait for boat rides last year. Uh, we did on occasion use that as overflow, overflow space um, and served alcohol there. Um, so I, as an accessory use, I, I don't expect that um, you know, we would be u- we would be using that much in this, you know, much in the same way from time to time. We didn't, didn't always serve alcohol there. Um, but from time to time, when the, when the business warranted and we needed to, we did.
About food?
Yes, the same thing. If, if, if we had uh, uh, the need, we would, we would serve food there.
I think uh, one of the questions that is going along with the other two is that I could see in the height of summer, when, when you're a bit, you're super busy, which you are that easily turning into just extra seating that gets used in a, in a consistent fashion as just another small dining and drinking area, like your patio and like the inside. No, oh Cindy, just got her hand up.
Yeah, so I think um, yeah, so we also have a number of people that are waiting for boat rides. The patio um, is primarily dedicated 100% to eating and drinking. So we have people that wait for boat rides. Um, that, you know, we prefer that they not wait for boat rides on the patio, so you know, they may sit in there and have a drink while they're waiting for their boat ride to get out of the sun. Uh, we, you know, we do have plans to have some seating in there. It's not a big space. Um, it's, you know, it's less than 400 square feet. Um, the History Center is getting, you know, a couple hundred of that. So, you know, we're not talking about a, you know, a big space that's going to be a large area for, you know, entertaining.
Cindy, you were muted, but what did you want to say?
Um, maybe John could clear that up a little bit by describing if his liquor license includes that space or is, does he have to make a change to his liquor license to include that space?
No, no, that uh, that area is currently covered by our liquor license, so we're legally able to serve there um, today.
John, that's what I was going to ask. So the, it's on your property. You have a liquor license as well as a right to serve food for retro boats, correct?
Yeah, we have a food and liquor license and uh, both, you know, that area is governed by both uh, those licenses. So are, we're legally allowed to serve alcohol in that area, correct?
Okay. So it'd be similar as if you were adding on to your existing building.
Um, I yeah, I, I mean, I guess you could say that. I mean, I, I think it'll be used differently um, than an addition to the building. You know, we're going to have people that come um, just to view the fish shanty. And they'll walk up and, you know, take a look around. They're free to walk in. It's open to the public and uh, you know, they may choose to, to rent a boat or get a drink or eat, or they may choose not to. I mean, it's uh, you know, one of the things that we're, we're proud of is not only have we provided public access to a a very desirable piece of property in Sagatuck, but now we'll be able to provide uh, public access to a very historically relevant building that's never had public a- access before.
And you probably know this, in fact, I'm sure you know this better than I do, but as to the liquor license, don't you have to have a way of controlling entry and exit from the property?
You have.
Just a sign?
Just a sign.
Okay.
Other questions?
Um, if, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I didn't, you know, you may have provided more narrative than I got Cindy uh, on, on this. I kind of looked through my ordinance book a bit. It would, maybe I missed, if you gave us more narrative, it, it would appear that it meets the criteria of that zone, the district, right?
Yes, in that particular zone district, the setbacks from the front, side and rear property lines is zero. And the maximum lot coverage is 100%, but it still has to meet fire code. So sometimes you can't have 100% coverage because then you couldn't have any windows or doors.
Right. I'm showing up, if I'm on the right chart, a minimum lot of uh, uh, 4,560 square feet.
I think it's
Is that the right number?
I think it's a lot closer to 8,712.
Oh, you, you, the actual, yeah, I, I, I was doing just a quick bit. It's uh, it's like 69 by 80 or something like that, but that's but that's squared off and uh, you know, some of that's water, but there doesn't seem to be any doubt in your mind that it's got adequate square feet.
No doubt in my mind at all.
Yeah, I, I have a question. Uh, we're, this is Water Street North, right?
Correct.
154.040. Um, this is, wouldn't this fall under, if, is this, this is considered special use under table two? Where it's, shows 50% lot coverage?
Under table two is, I believe, for residential structures only. You checked the heading on that?
Uh, mine's, maybe I have an old version. Mine says, single family dwellings, two family dwellings and special use.
Oh, we're not doing a special use today. We're doing a site plan review.
Is the pertinent ordinance?
Okay, but what, what, why does it? Then why are we up under permitted, looking at the table above with the, like 100% lot coverage and stuff?
I don't have my ordinance with me, Marcia, but 50%. There's permitted uses. And then there's special land use permits.
Yeah, and I
And we're doing um, permitted use that requires a site plan review.
Okay, that because this is deemed an accessory building?
Yes.
Associated with
The previously approved site plan. So we're actually amending the site plan that was approved previously.
Okay, because it, yeah, which fell under?
Well, we did several meetings with it.
There were several.
Mm-hmm. It went through various iterations, but um, the last thing we approved was a special land use as the restaurant. But that's already been determined. So now we're back to site plan review as in addition to a principal building. I'm not sure what that accessory use is, but it's um, clearly accessory to the main use. And the main use is for the renting of boats, which was also a special land use. So we were here, we were at this property many, many times.
Marcia, do you still have?
Okay, so, so the fact that, yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right um, at the right standards to approve it, because this is how stuff gets screwed up.
Yep, you're right.
Um, let me see. Because, because it, it, it is a permitted use.
Yep.
Even though the special, the special use that we approved was for the restaurant piece, and this is a special use part of the restaurant. That special use attaches back to what is the original permitted use of the property.
We're doing it under this section in your zoning ordinance that's titled site plan review. And I don't, like I said, I don't have my zoning ordinance with me, but I think it's like 154.064, maybe?
Yes.
Just off the top of my head, trying to remember, but I think that's what it is. And under the scope of that section, it says you let's see.
Cindy, I've got it online. If you could tell me where to go.
Um, 06, um, up, go up a little bit, go to 60. Right, site plan review. There we go. Um, paragraph B tells you the scope of what the Planning Commission will be doing a site plan review for ripple residential subdivisions, condominium subdivisions, all new non-res- residential principal structures, all expansions to existing non-residential principal structures. So it's number four that we're looking at and that guides us through these standards of um, 064. And those are the standards that are in the application and in my memo.
Do you want me to pull up your memo, Cindy?
No, I, I think everybody has it. I, I have it, so.
Well, I can see it.
Marcia, uh, do you still have a question?
No, that, it clarifies to me that it I, that this is an expansion of an existing non- non-residential.
You got it.
I think it confused me when you were saying, I mean, that this was an accessory building. Um, and I was trying to figure out how an accessory building tied to the site plan review.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions that you all have for John?
John can come back after you've opened the public hearing too, so.
It, was somebody going to say something?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, are we ready for our?
Cause, yeah, I was gonna, uh, open the public hearing as, as long as there are no more questions for us right now.
Uh, uh, one more thing, John. Have you chatted with your neighbors on this?
I have not uh, chatted with our immediate neighbor, Jim Dewey. Certainly I've chatted with uh, uh, Sean Steele. I've, you know, been talking to him quite a bit about this. I, I believe Mark's aware of it. He's on the uh, on the call now.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Uh, I had a question. Um, I guess it was in the paper. Uh, I guess it was just some conjecture, but that at some point in time but that at some point in time, you might want to sell some type of smoked fish or some type of fish product, uh, uh, out of that building is, is, I'm assuming you wouldn't, if you were selling something smoked, I assume you would not be smoking it on the premise, or have you, is there anything that we should know about that?
Yeah, Rich, good question. I can clear that up. So when working with the History Center, we initially discussed the idea because we wanted to retain the complete integrity of the building, which means that there's really limited egress. So we came up with the idea of, of preparing, you know, food, a commercial kitchen in the building, much like the root beer barrel, if you can imagine. And, uh, and talking with the Demerus family, um, you know, they, they just really didn't like that idea. And, uh, so we had, you know, you know, several meetings and discussions with them. They came up with the idea of, uh, putting the glass garage door in. And, and we arrived at, uh, you know, the use here that we've discussed today. So I know there was, uh, an early article about that, but, um, the Demerus family did not get to weigh in on that use, and after learning that they weren't thrilled, we went back to them and, and discussed another, another use.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I, I see this as, you know, a certain circumscribed use than if it was something other than that, we'd want to readdress it in terms of impact on the neighbors and that type of thing, in terms of smoke and fumes.
Yeah, if you're asking if we're gonna smoke fish on the property, we have no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question about the sidewalks? I am, I'm picturing in my mind where that sidewalk is going to end on the Dewey side of your property. Can you speak to that? Because I don't, you, you can't walk on the sidewalk over there in front of their house, can you, today?
Yeah, that's, that's a public right-of-way.
Okay, it is. So, you tell us where, where that, are you just suggesting that the sidewalk meet right up the third sidewalk?
Yeah, you're muted a little bit. Um.
I might be too far away. Excuse me, I'll come.
Yeah, so I, I get the gist of your question. Obviously, the, you know, the angle of the Dewey sidewalk, there's, um, you know, in the summertime, that whole front yard is roped off. Um, and it's confusing for people because they see a sidewalk and they walk up the driveway, and then they get to the dead end there, and then they either walk on the grass or walk back. So the idea would be able to bring that sidewalk all the way through. And, you know, because we are replacing that concrete, you know, the idea would be that we'd work with the city engineer and our contractor to determine the best way to, uh, join the, the new sidewalk.
Okay.
Aaron, can you go to the site plan page, please? Oh, yeah, that's, that's good.
What page is it? Sorry?
It's the site plan page that we talked about earlier. I gave you the wrong one.
There you go.
So the sidewalk that's in front of Dewey's would continue straight on past Retro Boats to the park. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
And then I guess my only other question, when you were talking about raising up the concrete, uh, on that general location, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna make sure there's no, uh, water pooling or anything that would happen around that as you were raising that up for, especially the Deweys on their side.
Yeah, it'll be lower than the Deweys. Yeah, we would still be about, I believe, about eight inches lower than the Deweys. Again, we would just have to work with the city engineer, um, to, you know, to figure out the best way to, you know, extend the sidewalk.
Is, yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. On the south side, is, is that, uh, do residents live there? What's on the south side of the?
That is residentially used property.
Okay.
I'm not sure how close that is to the property line, but, um, according to the building code, it should be five feet away, but it might not be. I wasn't.
I see a picture.
Yes, please.
Does that help?
Kind of.
Give it a zoom in at all?
No, that, that's, that's good. That shows us what's going on there, but that is residentially used property, but it's not part of the development when you get to that standard in the memo.
Just looking at that picture, there's a retaining wall there, a concrete retaining wall and shrubs and those, I'm guessing belong to the Deweys. How, how is your concrete gonna connect with that?
John, I think we have to work with the city engineer on that to see if it can be connected. There's always a way to do something, but, um, that is public right-of-way. Some of the bushes are in the public right-of-way, telephone poles in the public right-of-way, the little phone boxes in the public right-of-way, so.
So all that would have to be.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't have to necessarily be removed, or it might have to be altered.
Yeah, and again, the sidewalk, the cement there is shown is gonna be eight inches higher, which is pretty significant.
Yeah, and, um, on the water side is, is that? I, I guess it would be, what, the west side of the building, uh, your proposed building? Would that, is that like real close to the waterfront?
Aaron, can you go back to the site plan page? I'm making her work for her money today.
Yeah, I think, um, that might be eight feet, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and I have, well, I have a question, because the standards do say that there's a waterfront setback of 25 feet. But my, it wasn't clear to me then, what's the basis, you know, the starting point of the waterfront for the, for that setback? Because what, would, if the setback is where, you know, the eight feet, then it clearly is not within the 25-foot setback.
The setback is to the ordinary high watermark, which would be very close to where the seawall is. So it, it's not within the 25 feet of the high watermark, uh, ordinary high watermark.
Okay, so it's more like out, like out where the docks are, where those, like, tree.
Yeah, where the kind of diagonal line is, that's, that's close to the ordinary high watermark. And some people don't really understand that ordinary high watermark doesn't change. It's an elevation that's set by the Army Corps of Engineers. And if it's 582 feet above sea level, it stays 582 feet above sea level. No matter what the rise, how the water rises or lowers, it's the same ordinary high watermark.
Okay, no, no, I was just checking, because she said waterfront setback, and I wanted to clarify.
I'm glad you're thorough. I really appreciate it.
Well, this is how mistakes are made.
I know.
And then people get all arfy about it.
Any other questions that we have for Cindy or John before we do the public hearing?
Um, yeah, well, yeah, I do have a question. So there's, there's not going to be a commercial kitchen, uh, in this building?
No.
Okay. And then what about, um, like air conditioning units, rooftop, or?
Yeah, good, good question.
Heating HVAC system that's gonna be sitting somewhere visible?
No, the building will not be climate controlled.
And there won't be a bar in there either? You're just saying anything that people go in there to eat and drink will be, uh, gotten through your main, your main building?
See, I'm sorry, one more time?
And there won't be a bar in the shanty either? There won't be any serving there? It'll just, all of that will come from your main space, and they'll go in there and enjoy it from time to time?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's not the intention again, but, like, you know, we're, we're legally permitted to have a rollout bar there, if you will, if there was a special event. And, you know, if they pushed a bar on wheels and had a private bar in the building for a special event, I'm not saying that, you know, that, you know, where, where somebody's pouring glass, you know, glasses of wine, I'm not sure what you mean, but, um, you know, we would, we would do whatever we are, you know, currently allowed to do as an accessory building in there. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
I just don't know what the definition of serving, you know, what you mean by that, I guess, if you.
I think what he was, I think what he was after, sorry, I think what he was after is, is, is there going to be a permanent bar in there?
Yeah, that was my only question.
No, we don't have the intention of.
So that condition could be put on.
A very, it's a very small, small space.
Real small, right. All right.
So I, I just wanna be clear, though. I mean, this, so, you know, the Harringtons aren't on the call. Um, they own the shanty, they own the property. So, um, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of Retro Boats. I just wanna make sure that, you know, it's understood that, you know, they're gonna wanna make sure that they can do whatever is legally permitted to do, um, you know, on the property. I owe it to them, um, to not make commitments that are, you know, unnecessary.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, Cindy, this is our public hearing time, right?
Right, you can open the public hearing.
So we will now open our public hearing on the, uh, 730 Water Street, placing in the fish shanty. And we'll, I'll call it to order now. Um, Cindy's given us a summary. Do you wanna give us any other summary?
No, I'm satisfied with that. We do have one written correspondence, and I tend to forget to read those into the record, so please remind me if we get to the end of people who wanna make a public comment during the public hearing. And those are limited to five minutes.
The readings. Okay, so, uh, we have presentation by the applicant, but we've already done that. Do you wanna do that again?
No.
So we're, uh, to, uh, the public comment, uh, portion of the public hearing. So, uh, if you wish to make a public comment right now, we're gonna start by, um, having you identify yourselves, give us your name and address, uh, address your comments to me, the chair. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we will start with supporting comments, uh, either in, in the audience or the letter. So if any of you have a comment in support of this, uh, proposition, please, uh, make them now.
Um, I have a comment. Uh, my name is Randy DeRosa. I'm at 455 Mason Street here in Sagatuck. Um, I also work with the History Center, and I just wanna say that, um, we're very excited about this. Uh, we've been working with John and, and Josh Harrington. And, um, in, I, I think they've been really great in listening to sort of our ideas in terms of an exhibit, in terms of design and aesthetics, um, making sure that this, this, this ends up looking like an authentic reproduction of, of what was a very important part of the history here in Sagatuck. So I just wanna say, and we have an agreement to work with him, um, going forward, to make sure that that exhibit is maintained and continues to tell the story of, uh, commercial fishing, the history of commercial fishing in Sagatuck. So very much in support.
Great, thank you, Randy.
Sure.
Anyone else wanna speak in support of, uh, the proposition? Do I see, anyone see any other hands I'm missing?
Nope.
Nobody? Okay, all right, so now we will open up comments to those, uh, in opposition. Again, state your name and, uh, address, and address the chair, and limit your comments to five minutes. Anyone? Am I missing anyone? I don't see anybody with their hands up. Nobody in opposition?
I just have my letter, my written communication. This is from the Deweys. And it says, "We are writing our concerns about the fish shanty for 730 Water Street. Our property is directly next door to this property, 726 Water Street. One of our concerns is the cooking smell coming directly into our property rentals and the garbage dumpsters directly next to our wall. This is right by our door, going to our upper suite. Again, our concern is the smell, as well as what it will look like. When we came to you for our permits, one of your concerns was to where were we going to put the garbage? We built a sep- a separate closet area just for the garbage, and you were happy with this. Now you have not, now you have not been concerned for us. We would appreciate you thinking about us and our property values and our rental unit, our rental guests. Sincerely, Sagatuck Landings Nightly Rental."
Okay, thank you, Cindy. And so nobody else in, uh, opposing that would like to speak? Okay, so we'll move on to general comments, audience and letters. Anyone has a general comment you wish to make? You can do so now.
John, I'd like to go back to the permanent bar thing, and I, I understand exactly what you said with not wanting to tie the hands of of the owners of the property. But I'm not sure, but that a, that a condition on this that would, that would not allow a permanent bar in that facility, I think that condition might be reasonable precisely because of sort of what you implied, that at some point in time, after you've made your fourth or fifth million dollars on Retro Boats and and you guys retire or whatever, these two could become separate properties, in which case if there's a permanent bar inside that fish shanty, you've basically got, you would be left with, or we'd be left with a, a very tiny bar situation or, or, or potential, and that, that concerns me. And it, it, so I'm, I guess I'm saying, if you don't, I mean, if you're, and I get the intent on special, on special events, and I think that's a great use for that property to have, you know, small cocktail parties or whatever inside that fish shanty, and I could see why people would wanna take advantage of that and, and, and what have you. But on the basis of a, as you said, a roll of power, what have you, permanent bar to me is a, is a different matter, and and begs for some level of scrutiny, I think.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else with general comments? Cindy?
Just to address Dan's concern, if we were to put that condition on that there would not be a permanent bar in that location and go by the representations made by the applicant that it would not be climate controlled, we can, um, use those as part of the conditions. That would not preclude a future tenant or owner to coming back to the planning commission and asking for, a revision to their site plan review and ask to loosen some of those regulations. So anything we put in conditions can be removed later by the planning commission. It just has to be approved by the planning commission. So.
Always, that's always true. I understand, but that's always true. I mean, that's both the extent and the limit of our review.
They have to be reasonable conditions, and it seems to me like if we're going to use the representations made by the applicant, that it will not be climate controlled, it would, there would have to be winterizing of a bar every year, and that might not be to their liking. The rollout bar seems a lot more user-friendly, but I'm not the applicant. I just, I just work here.
All right. So if there, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but accessory buildings, it said, uh, in, that they need to be, or they shall not be erected within 10 feet of any other building. And so I, I guess I, I also. And so I, I guess I also had a question if it, if it is 10 feet or more from, from that, from their main Retro Boats building. Because on the, on the site plan, there is no dimension that shows that distance between the existing building and the relocated building.
I can answer, I can answer those questions for you, Marsha.
Okay.
It is an accessory building, but it's an accessory use. So that's why it's a permitted use. And it's really, the setbacks are not spelled out in that section. It is five feet away, more than five feet away from the property line, but the setbacks in that zone district are zero. So potentially they could have had it quite a little bit closer.
No, I'm talking about, I'm looking at section.
Two, oh, 22?
154022, yeah.
Yep, and it says the.
Buildings and structures. H1, accessory building shall not be erected within 10 feet of any other building.
On that same property.
Right. And so my question is, is it?
It's greater than 10 feet.
The, the location of, of the shanty 10 feet from Retro Boats. It's not indicated on the drawing what that distance is.
Can you go to the site plan, Erin? I think it's approximately 11 feet.
Yeah, it's almost 12 feet.
I mean, I sort of can eyeball and it looks like it is, but I'm, but I don't know.
Well, I did.
Did you use min on this at all or?
No, I, I did scale the distance and it is, if it's shown, if it's built is on the drawing, it's 11 feet or a little bit more. There's one thing that's not shown on this site plan that John still kindly sent to me and I did not get it to Erin on time. There are two smallish dumpsters, I think they're probably two yard dumpsters that are between the relocated building and the property line. The fire department did not have opportunity to do the site plan review on this, this project. So one of the conditions I'm going to strongly recommend is that it be subject to review and approval by the fire department.
So the trash cans will be where they are basically now, but just a smaller fenced in area between the edge of the building and the property line of what the Deweys, is that correct?
Yeah.
Now, that fence is not shown on here, but it is a requirement of the zone district. When we get to the standards, you'll see that, that that is clearly a requirement.
Could I speak to that? Am I muted?
No, you're good.
I can hear you.
So, so currently the dumpsters are parallel with the road. The dumpsters will be perpendicular with the road or parallel with the length of the building. And so, and that would be shown in, in the, in the picture that I, I sent. And I definitely understand the Dewey's feedback as it relates to the letter. I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're relieved to know that the cooking won't take place in the building. I think that probably they were left with that impression based on the article. But the, you know, the garbage goes out twice a week. So we pay extra to have our garbage emptied twice per week during the season.
So where are the, the trash cans are in front? They'll be in front of, on the street side of the relocated building?
No, they'll be on the, the south side of the relocated building.
Okay, on the south side. So between, I guess what we currently know where, where that cement wall is and. Building.
I don't know if you guys can see that.
Can you get a little closer? I'm sorry, John, you were.
Yeah.
Get it to me.
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
Or John, if you're able to email that to me, I can pop it up on my screen for everybody.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think we're on repeat comments of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make any additional comments before we close the public hearing? Okay, all right, so I, we will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And move on to commission deliberation, or I should say more commission deliberation. Questions, thoughts?
Sir, if I might, I, I guess we're going to be more fully addressing the garbage situation.
In what respect?
I, I wasn't aware of where the garbage was at present and where it's going to be. And is it, I just don't have very much information on, is this garb, how this garbage is presently handled and how it's to be handled and is there fencing around it or a way to contain it?
Yeah, so the planning, the planning commission previously approved, you know, garbage outside dumpsters with fencing and that's in place now. We're just essentially, you know, moving that, I don't know, probably five or six feet and changing it from perpendicular to the road and parallel to the road. So it's, it's not much different. Actually, it's an improved situation because the garbage will be further away from the, the door that the Deweys mentioned in their letter.
Thank you.
It doesn't seem optimal from a marketing standpoint of the historical aspect to have garbage real close to the shanty.
Well, I think if you just, so if, if you saw the drawing that I put up, if you just take a look at the sightline, if imagine the sightlines, it's only five feet, there's only five feet between that retaining wall in the building. So if you can imagine the, the dumpsters 40 inches wide, you're pushing it back away from the front facade of the building. So you really have to have just this narrow sightline to see the dumpster. I understand your point, though.
John, there's no space to the water side, to the west side of the building for them?
So they're wheeled dumpsters. So there's, you know, there's currently no concrete there. You should be very familiar with, you know, the property line there from the building. There's only three feet, you know, from the side of the building to city property. So not enough to put the dumpsters, otherwise they'd have to be in the front of the building. It's, it's, you know, it's not ideal, but it's just, I mean, it's the only place they can go.
Is this a situation where screening or fencing is required or could be required?
Yeah, there is. So again, I'm going to try this here because Erin, I'm sorry, I couldn't just quickly send an email. But I don't know, you see the two dumpsters there and you see the hash lines, the lines there? So those, that, that would be, you know, a gate or a fence, if you will, on the front and back, you know, within the dumpsters. And you can see that it's not on the, the front edge, edges of the building.
If you could look at page three of your memo and look down to paragraph I. "All loading areas and outside storage areas, including areas for the storage of trash, which face or are visible from residential districts or public thoroughfares, shall be screened by an opaque wall or landscape screen not less than six feet in height." So that is a requirement of the site plan review process.
Can I ask you a question? You might have just tried to answer it, but I wasn't quite sure. From the west end of that shanty to the edge of the water, is there not room for you to do the same thing there? Hugging that west end of the shanty to get it off the side?
You mean putting the dumpsters on the water?
Uh, well, no, how much, how much, I thought you said there was several feet from the back end of the shanty to the edge of the water. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there is, but I guess you just, so that, the most interesting feature of the shanty is the water side. So.
Oh, I'm, did I miss that? I thought it was the, the front.
No, no, and there's, yeah, no, there's a, because it was on the water, there's a, you know, an old sliding door. Again, see if there's another, that's just the front.
Sorry, I'm just looking through this really quickly to see if there's a different angle here that I can pull up in one of these. Sorry, bear with me here.
Yeah, well, that view, that view from the top said sliding door.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Well, that would further, that would actually, if we put the dumpsters there, that would really put the dumpsters in, you know, very close to the Dewey's patio and their guests there. So that, you know, it definitely wouldn't be optimum for, for us or for them.
John, is the raised height concrete on which the shanty sits, does that extend to the south toward the Dewey property to, to the, to the retaining wall?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions, any other deliberations? Is the height of the shanty 12 feet? Is that what I saw?
Off it to the eve, yes, eaves.
And so when you raise the concrete up several more feet, you said what, eight, I'm sorry, several more inches? You said maybe eight inches of raised concrete and then the building becomes visually about 12 feet. I'm thinking about just in relation to that Dewey property.
Yeah, so if it helps you, we're raising it up at the same height that the current floor in the existing building is. So there's, there's quite a taper there that goes to the south from the height of, of the existing building. So it's, it'll be that height all the way across, just slightly, you know, pitched for, you know, for drainage.
So basically what the Deweys will, is there a window on that side of their property? It seems like they're closed.
Yeah, there's, I believe there's, well, I can't think, but I think there's windows upstairs. Yeah, I guess there's one window where, that, on the lower level.
So basically what was, is going to happen to that window is with that building there, they're going to stare right into the side of the shanty at 12 feet tall or something less. If it's not, the eaves obviously are higher, but. Much more significant visual block than the trash cans and the six foot or eight foot or whatever that privacy fencing is on there today. Is that right?
Yes, I understand, but I believe that's a stairwell.
Oh, okay.
That door actually goes to a flight of steps that go upstairs.
So the, the window that's on the bottom is not really a window, it's a glass part of a door?
No.
It's a door?
A window at the bottom of the stairs.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Are we done with commission deliberation? Does anyone else have anything they want to ask John or talk among ourselves? Well, that's item F on our public hearing, Cindy. Does that move us to G then, the commission action?
Yes, you could talk about whether or not you want to approve the site plan. And if you so decide to approve it, what conditions do you want to place? I think John talked about a lot more than is written in the application itself. So he is held to the representation that he makes at the meeting and the meetings are recorded. So we can go back anytime if we need to.
Are we ready to take action? Is that the expectation that we will opt tonight?
Yes, you can make a motion and list what conditions you might want, get the, get the motion supported and then you can have further discussion and then, then we'll call the roll.
Are there any motions? Do you want to talk about conditions first or you just want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the site plan as written and as further expanded upon by the applicant in the course of this meeting with two conditions. One being there not be permitted the construction of a permanent bar alcohol service in the shanty. And two being the standard conditional upon the fire department, fire district approval of the, of the facility. And motion.
I'll second that.
That was Mike that did the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do, do we, have we talked about or is it the hours of operation and? And I know that there was, you know, the, the whole issue of music when this thing was approved before, loud music. Given that this is basically an extension of that, do we need to discuss that? Or does that carry over because it's?
Those same conditions on hours of operation have not been proposed to be changed. So they would be the same hours of operation. If they did want to change the hours of operation, they could submit another application to amend their special land use approval for a restaurant.
So the hours of operation for this building would go with the existing hours of operation of the main, the principal building?
Yes.
Folks, I'm, I'm sorry, this is John and I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is, this is important because I need to, I need to tell the Harringtons. So obviously, you know, they're allowing us to use their, you know, their property and now we're placing limits, limits, you know, on how their property can be used. At the same time, you know, they're generous enough to, to put this prop, put this piece of this building, you know, on their property. So I need you to better define specifically what a permanent bar is so I can make them aware of that. So for example, if we put a retail counter in there for the purposes of merchandise and then we have a special event and wine is served on there, you know, is that a permanent bar? I have to talk to the Harringtons about that. So, I mean, they, they may, you know, they're, the, yeah. I just need to talk to them about how you feel their property should be used.
John, I think, I think the standard for a permanent bar is pretty clear and I don't think that would affect what you just described. I would not consider a retail counter that's in use every day selling tchotchkes or whatever as a, as a, as a permanent alcohol serving bar. And at the same time, if the Harringtons are that interested, they should be in this meeting. These are open meetings. It's, you know, we're all sitting around here for an hour and a half. They're welcome to be here too.
John, I, just to clarify that, a permanent bar would be one that was approved by the health department for the serving of alcoholic beverages. So all the same hand wash sink.
Okay.
Glass wash sink.
Okay.
Proper sewage disposal, that would constitute a permanent bar.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Do we wanna talk anymore about the conditional approval motion that, um, Dan made and Mike seconded?
Well, yeah, I, I know you had mentioned that there's not gonna be any heating or cooling, um, equipment. What about, uh, like any wat- water service? Will there be wa- water meters hanging on the sides of the building or?
I mean, there's no, and that's not, you know, part of, part of the plan, um, to have a, you know, a water meter. There's existing water service. You know, I haven't talked to the Harringtons specifically about water service, but because we're pouring new concrete, um, it probably makes sense, um, to put, you know, some water service while we're doing it from the, um, you know, existing building to, you know, because you're, you're, you know, you're putting new concrete in. I haven't talked to him about that. Actually, you just made me think of it. There may be water, but there wouldn't be a separate water meter, if you will, but it would make sense to make water available in there for whatever purpose.
Okay, yeah, I'm just thinking of, you know, like having, uh, some big meters or equipment hanging off the building.
Just like that's on the side of the Dewey's building.
Yeah, yeah.
Air conditioners and water service, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think it would come from the existing building and it probably would be wise for John, when he's doing that, to install the underground parts of the water. So if, in the future, if something happens and you have to have water there, you would have that without digging up your concrete and.
Yeah, and I, yeah, that, that makes sense. So, you know, our, our idea is to, you know, retain the, the history and charm, you know, of the building. Um, you know, if you think of Fish Town, that's kind of what we, you know, what we imagine. So, you know, certainly, you know, water meters or utilities or central air units, you know, are not consistent with what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, John. Anything else? Now, we've got two conditions on approval in the motion.
It, it just, I mean, it's, it's obvious, you know, we need to, and I don't have any, you know, this sounds like a good use. I was concerned about the garbage. It sounds like at least it's being addressed. It probably would have been better to have the garbage inside. So, you know, some type of a structure, but and then, uh, we really need to view this as really an extension of the current use of the, of the business and with an eye toward future expansion of business use. And the historical aspect, well, I certainly liken this to be encouraged is almost incidental to the use of the building. At this point, so, you know, we just need to view it along those lines, I think. And I don't, you know, it's, having said all that, I, it sounds okay to me.
Anybody else? Thank you, Rich. Are we good with the motion? Do we want to vote on it?
I move we vote on it.
You want a second?
Already been moved and
You know, and you don't do these meetings very often. It gets easy to, to make a lot of motions that you don't need to make. But you can just call the questions and ask me to call the roll.
I think we're ready for a roll call.
Thank you. Fox?
Yes.
Ben Meter?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes, I approve.
Um, Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries. Plan is approved with a couple of conditions and the representations made by the applicant.
Excellent, all right. I close the public hearing now? Anything, um, that's a question.
Yes, we, we should have closed it before the deliberations and I can get that time from the, from the recording.
Out of feeling, it just didn't say it explicitly, so I didn't do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are, uh, on, uh, item B now. We're back up at the agenda. Number six, we've done the Water Street. B, we need to adopt the schedule of meetings for the twenty twenty-one year. We just need a motion to approve those?
Motion that we approve the schedule of meetings for twenty twenty-one as proposed in the agenda.
I second.
I will call the roll. Mans?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Uh, Van Meter?
Yes.
Vlacity? Was that a yes?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm too far away, excuse me.
Motion carries. Um, then we just have your annual report. And this is the same report that I do every year that has to go to city council, but before I send it to them for me, I want you to send it to them from you. So if you had a chance to look at it, you can see that permits were down quite a bit this year. And I'm sure that was due to the time that we were shut down in the spring and a lot of projects didn't get started. However, the inquiries about permits are way up. So, um, we had three public hearings for ordinance amendments. We had a meeting that was canceled because of COVID and I think that was March nineteen, I wanna say. Um, and then some of the other activities that we did, kind of just a brief summary of what we did, um, during two thousand and twenty. And if you have any questions or comments or changes about that, let me know. Otherwise, I will present it to the city council.
That take a motion, Cindy?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, that motion that we send Cindy's excellent work here forward to the city council without us having to do anything more. Except take credit, some amount of credit for it.
I second that.
Okay, I'll call, unless there's any discussion, I'll go ahead and call the roll. Fox?
Yes.
Vlacity? Van Meter?
Yes.
Uh, Crawford?
Yes.
And Casper?
Resounding yes.
And Mans, yes.
Oh, I missed, oh, I still have McPaulin on this list.
We're gonna give your job to Aaron. Be careful.
All right, I think we can move to the next item.
Yes, uh, communications. Are there any communications?
No.
Okay, moving on, reports of officers and committees. I don't know?
None.
Hey, if, I don't know if this falls in here, but it's something that got dropped. Uh, I hope John's still on the call here, because I think he'd be interested. It got dropped, I think, when, uh, it's, you know, when Kirk left or whatever, but made a recommendation way back, I mean, I don't know, five, six months ago, that seemed to be head nodded all over the place, not only here, but also I think to the city council to install a second crosswalk on, or maybe it's more than a second. The last one we had installed two, three years ago, uh, goes from Wicks Park Grill, basically that corner, pretty much directly across to the chain ferry. And the thought was with the addition now, since that time of the barge, as well as the addition of, uh, retro boats and now the, the, um, the shanty, which will be a separate and related attraction. The amount of street foot traffic, and John referred to it on sidewalk, moving north and south, but also getting across the street. You know, north of Wicks Park, there is no crosswalk on Water Street. So the thought was to install one. I think it's on the corner, the first, I don't know the names of the streets, so I should, the first corner south of retro boats, which would kinda split the difference between the end of the street and then the distance back to Wicks Park. So, uh, I don't know if, as I say, I don't know if that's within this area of discussion, but I'd like to see that recommendation, uh, reinvigorated with the, with the city. It's, it's not a very costly thing to do and it seems to make sense with all the kids and everybody else crossing the streets. That's it.
I remember that discussion and if I can't find the exact location, I know your phone number and I will call you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we are to the public comment section on any item now, so I'd like to make a public comment, uh, identify yourself with your name and your address and keep your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone? Did they all leave? I don't. What's that?
Looks like pretty much everybody did leave. John's back now, but, um,
Did you have a comment?
I don't see any, I don't see any hands raised. All right, we have a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-two. And I'll call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
And Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned, commissioned.
Thank you.
Much for your hard work.
Thank you all for your hard work and, and diligent asking of questions. I, I really appreciate that, that it's a big help to me when I write the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your work in getting it ready.